Mayor Martini. Councilmembers Ratty. Lawson. Smith. Kerrigan. Schmidt. City Attorney's Office, Doug Thornley. And City Manager Driscoll.
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, so we have no implications, Speaker, today's. We do? It says no, but okay. And I don't remember your name, I'm sorry. Come on up.
Yeah.
Give us your name.
Pete Vosler.
Pete, how are you? I'm sorry.
Doing fine.
Says here none, so I'm...
I know, it's on my calendar, so...
You're not in here, Pete.
I'm none, I'm here.
Pete, thank you, I appreciate it.
Yeah. Look, we're not nobodies, we're somebody. And the City Council is great, and the mayor is great, and we're so grateful that you are bringing this city along and doing great things for us. So today, we ask for your wisdom beyond our capabilities. You said if we need it, ask it, and you'll give it. And so we need that now. Bless our city. Continue to bring enterprise and business. Continue to protect our police, our fire, and those who make our city great and safe. And we thank you for your blessing on this meeting. In your mighty name, amen.
Thank you, Pastor Vosler. I appreciate that from none, that's good.
There you go.
Would you remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance, Mr. Thornley? Would you lead us?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united in God, and united in God with the routine justice of our world.
Okay, next is comments from the public. I have no speaking cards. Anyone want to speak under comments from the public? Come on up, Ted.
Always waiting.
Oh.
Well, I'm waiting, so I'm waiting.
All right, well, come on up anyway, if you want, it's all right. All right, seeing no speaking cards, we'll move on to approval of the agenda. Anybody want to take anything out of order? Not looking for a motion to approve? Mr. Smith?
Move to approve.
Mr. Lawson?
Second.
Move by Councilman Smith, seconded by Councilwoman Lawson, to approve the agendas outlined by staff. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously. 3.1, consideration of possible approval of the minutes of the council workshop of May 27, 2014, and the regular Sparks City Council meeting of June 9, 2014. Any additions, deletions, or corrections? Not looking for a motion, Mr. Lawson.
Move to approve.
Ms. Ratty.
Second.
Move by Councilman Lawson, seconded by Councilwoman Ratty, to approve the minutes of the workshop of May 27, and the regular meeting of June 9. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously. Announcements, presentations, proclamation, Parks and Recreation Month. Ms. Ratty? And then I do have a public comment, I believe?
Whereas parks and recreation programs are an integral part of communities throughout this country, including Sparks, Nevada, and whereas our parks and recreation are vitally important to establishing and maintaining the quality of life in our communities, ensuring the health of all citizens, and contributing to the economic and environmental well-being of a community and region, and whereas parks and recreation programs build healthy, active communities that aid in the prevention of chronic disease, provide therapeutic recreation services for those who are mentally or physically disabled, and also provide the mental and emotional health of all citizens, and whereas parks and recreation programs increase a community's economic prosperity through increased property values, expansion of the local tax base, increased tourism, the attraction and retention of businesses, and crime reduction, and whereas parks and natural recreation areas improve water quality, protect groundwater, prevent flooding, improve the quality of the air we breathe, provide vegetative buffers to development, and produce habitat for wildlife, and whereas parks and recreation provide a place for children and adults to connect with nature and recreate outdoors, and whereas we recognize the vital contributions of our employees and volunteers in parks and recreation who keep public parks clean and safe for visitors, provide events and programming for all ages and abilities, advocate for more open space and better trails, and ensure that parks and recreation facilities are safe and accessible places for all citizens to enjoy. Now therefore, I, Gino R. Martini, Mayor of the City of Sparks, Nevada, do hereby proclaim July 2014 as Parks and Recreation Month. Congratulations.
Okay, go ahead, Tracey, then I have a public comment.
Okay, thank you. Tracy Dominguez, Parks and Recreation Director. I just want to, on behalf of our department, as well as the National Parks and Recreation Association, challenge everyone to take the "out is in" 31-day challenge. And what that means is, attempt to get outside every day in July, and take one thing that you normally do inside and do it outside, whether it's a meeting, a lunch meeting, whatever it is, get outside and do it outside every day in July. Thank you.
Thanks, Tracey. Okay, Nathan Daniel? Come on down, sir, you have three minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Nathan Daniel, I'm the director of Truckee Meadows Parks Foundation, and I just want to take the opportunity to thank you and commend you for proclaiming July Parks and Recreation Month. I think our parks are often underappreciated, but used heavily, so it's really important that we thank the staff, especially Director Dominguez and her staff, work tirelessly, and ever since the beginning of recession, they're working at reduced funding levels and reduced staffing levels, so you're getting a great value out of the staff that you have. There's absolutely no doubt about that. They do tremendous amount of work, and not to call anyone out specifically, but Andres Stegall, I know, I call her on Fridays, and I know that's her day off, she's in the office almost every Friday, so I'll just say, yeah, you have a really fantastic staff working, so, thank you.
Nathan, thank you. We do have a great staff, and what they've done in the recession years has been tremendous, really, for how it's been and stuff, so I appreciate you coming by and letting us know that, we appreciate that. Ms. Ratty?
Before you walk away, so I wanted to thank the Parks Foundation for a series...
Is it they're promoting right now, which they're hosting weekly walks in the park? Do you want to tell people a little bit more about that, so folks know?
Thank you for the opportunity. We are doing a free guided walk every Thursday evening in all of the park, well, in specific parks in Sparks, Reno, and Washoe County. The next walk is on Thursday, it's actually Virginia Lake over in Reno, and then the one after that is back in Sparks, I believe. I have to check the... Is it, yeah, Rock Park would be the following week, so we'll be down there. And the whole idea is to, again, give people an opportunity to get outside and explore our parks, there's so many that... There's so many great facilities that we have here that are underappreciated, potentially. People just don't know they're there, they're in their backyard, and people have a tendency not to go to the recreational opportunities they have right in their own backyard, so that's the goal of our series. It's free, open to the public, every Thursday evening at 7:00 PM, and you can check our website, which is at Truckee Meadows Parks Foundation for our schedule. So, thank you.
Thank you for bringing all those volunteers into the parks program.
Appreciate it.
Thanks, Nathan. Okay, consent items. Anybody want to pull a consent item? If not, looking for a motion? Mr. Schmidt?
Motion to approve items 5.1 through 5.7, as outlined by staff.
Ms. Ratty?
Second.
Move by Councilman Schmidt, seconded by Councilwoman Ratty, to approve of consent items 5.1 through 5.7. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously. General Business, 6.1, consideration of possible approval of the amended extension to the agreement for Golden Eagle Regional Park concession services between the City of Sparks and SVAL LLC. Tracy?
Good afternoon, Mayor Martini and council members. Tracy Dominguez, Parks and Recreation Director today. Before you is a request to amend our existing agreement with SVAL. They run the Red's Golden Eagle Grill Restaurant out at Golden Eagle Regional Park. They've been doing this for five years, and we're at a point now in the agreement where they are exercising their right to extend the agreement for another five years, and they have requested a change in the financial situation, basically, the amount of rent that they pay. First let it be known that this has proven to be a challenging business model, being in the center of a sports complex is something different than what's been done before, and therefore, it's just created a challenge. You know, we have a lot of programming out there, and it's serving its purpose, but the rent is awfully high. As you see in my report, the... I'm sorry, this printed very lightly, and the going rate is $2 a square foot. They're currently paying over that per square foot. That price is based on the tenant paying for other amenities, such as the common area outside, utilities, and all of that. They do not pay that. So the request is to reduce their rent from $8,000 a month, just over $8,000 a month, down to $4,000 per month, effective with the new... The current agreement expires, I believe, July 15, and so it would be effective with that renewal at that time. That's really it, in a nutshell. If you want, I'll be here to answer any questions. We also have the owners of the restaurant in the audience to address any concerns that you might have as well.
Questions, Mr. Lawson?
Couple of things. Tracy?
I can't read.
We didn't negotiate at all, this is their proposal, we didn't counteroffer anything.
No, I did not.
Okay. And we pay $25,000 a year, and the extra fees is what I saw, is that correct?
For utilities.
Utilities.
Correct.
And all of the above. So, well, I'll tell you what, after looking at this and reading the history, and it sounds like it may have been overrated a little bit, I'd like to rebid it. I'd like to see it go back out to bid. I'd like to extend their contract for six months, till January. That's when the contract should end, in my mind anyways, when there's nothing going on out there. It shouldn't end right in the center of all the activity at the park. So that's... If I... Are there any other questions? I'll be happy to make a motion, but that's what I'm going to suggest we do.
Other questions, Mr. Schmidt?
You know, I, for one, I want to thank you for being out there. It adds a lot to the park, and the amenities that you provide, although they, you know, more people could be using them, and I make a commitment that I'll be out there a couple times this year to use your facilities, because I haven't been. It's just not something I think about, but I think, if I could ask him a question, how much... How much money do you put into getting that place ready?
Yeah, come on down.
Come on down, sir. Just give your name for the record, if you don't mind, please.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, council members. My name is Jack Sterling, I'm one of the members of SVAL LLC, and to answer your question, Mr. Schmidt, we put in over $1 million in upgrades into that facility. We basically built the entire restaurant facility upstairs.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Kerrigan?
I can't see... What's the term of this contract? I didn't... I can't find it.
It's a... The original agreement was a five-year term with two options to extend five years each. So we're at the end of our first five-year term, and we wish to continue this agreement for the next 10 years, with that another option to renew or extend, sorry, at five years from now.
Okay, so there is no, like, there's no place in the contract that we can take a look at it in a year, to see how things are going?
It's not written that way at this point. It's to extend at the end of five years. So we're just continuing, we're in a 15-year agreement, so to speak, now, and we're at that first five-year, and we're discussing the next two trimesters, if you will, that we reevaluate in five years, see how they're doing in sales.
Okay.
Sir, are you... I mean, let me ask you what your thoughts are about extending this for six more months and then rebidding, what...
Under the terms of our contract, we exercised our option within the given 120-day term prior to its expiration. We are fully intent, quite honestly, of honoring the commitment that we made in exercising our option. We pursued a modification, some lightening, of the lease payment, the financial terms of the contract, in discussions that started back in January with Tracy. We knew full well that there was the possibility that council would deny that, could potentially want to negotiate a different financial term, but we have every intent of honoring the commitment we've made and exercising our option.
Okay. Tracy, how many people bid on this when we let this out?
There was just two.
Okay. Mr. Schmidt?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I first want to say thank you for what you did out there. You know, five years ago, things were much, much different in this community. You put a million-dollar investment, I'll take it face value, of what you did, to open up a restaurant, and, you know, this community was different five years ago, and I want to say thank you. You know, that's quite a big gamble. I also understand businesses, that, you know, things are turning, you know, a profit, you got to go and find a ways, go and cut costs, and in your business, it's very difficult to cut a lot of costs without cutting quality. The last thing we want to do is cut quality out there. I want to have a nice place, people come, people can remember. I also thank you for honoring your commitment for the next 10 years. I think that's important, to put that on the table. I have questions, and I've talked to staff and everything, about the reduction, and I'm okay with the reduction in the fee. What I'm not okay with is that if we set six months, a year, whatever, to come back, five years, whatever, what is the different results that I can expect in the performer of the business versus now? It's not the 48,000, whatever, we're cutting the 50,000. That's not an issue to me right now. What's the issue to me is, what is the marketing plan? What are we going to expect difference in the next five years? Or five years from now, we come back on the table and say we need to... No, we still have the same problem. That's my concern.
I think in the packet that we at least saw, that was provided to you on this agendized item, it speaks to the revenue that the restaurant has generated in its first five years. Each and every one of those years, we've shown fairly significant increases in sales through effort upon effort to build traffic into our facility, and into this partnership between our business and the city. We've... We're six months into this fiscal year. Four of those months are pretty soft months. It's really on... It's the non-tournament time for us, and we're tracking about 17% up on revenue through that... Through that time. Our marketing efforts, we continue to make traction with the leagues, the families of the various leagues that are out there. In the five years that we were there, we were really challenged from the outset to be a good community member and stand with those leagues in their efforts. And with each year under our belt, I think that we've gotten much stickier, for lack of better terms, with those folks. We've added packages, various packages. We're trying to make the facility far more of a year-round facility for us, even though tournament play stops. We've begun to start realizing private parties, folks using our facility during the off months for holiday parties, retirement parties, those types of events. We are very... We're very keenly focused towards acquiring more of those. We see continual growth in our revenue out there. The incentive's on us to make sure that we hit it, to get a return for our investment.
And I guess my concern is that when we were pushed this, first off, I was just could not believe it's been five years. That was my first thought, I said, where did the time go to? Five years, and then I started thinking, how many times have I heard an advertisement or saw an advertisement for this facility anywhere through the City of Sparks and their system, or anything else like that? And I could not remember one time seeing anything locally advertised on the facility. And then I just had the panel lunch appointment, and, you know, a group that meets at, you know, the golf course, Wingfield Springs up there every week, and they were saying that they wanted to find another place to meet, but they really don't have any place on out there to go ahead and they can meet once a week and have food and beverages there. And I said, well, have you ever thought about Golden Eagle Regional Park? You know, the light went on, because that's not known as being a local facility. It's not... It's only known as for the softball players, and the teams come in, not local people. And I think that that's, if you're going to survive, I'm not in your business, that it takes local dollars, and everything, every business takes local dollars to go ahead and survive it. So that's my biggest concern here, is that, you know, what do we have in place, you know, because before, the situation is, you had the monkey on your back to perform, now it's... You have the monkey on our back, but we pay the price for it if you don't perform. I mean, that's the scenario. So I'm more concerned with the marketing, the performer, how do we get back to the original numbers, and how long is that going to take to do it? I would like to see some type of graduating scale in place, where there's some incentive that we can work those things on.
Okay.
So that's just my two cents here, and I'm more than happy to, you know, work on some ideas to go and do that, but I, you know, I can't stress enough, thank you for that investment in the community. It's a wonderful facility, and I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Ratty?
So I guess I have a couple of questions.
So the 6% of annual sales that we have not achieved because you needed to hit a specific amount?
Correct.
Does lowering the lease rate to this level allow us to achieve that amount?
We're also lowering the break, the breakpoint. We're increasing our percentage from the 6% up to 8% on anything over $600,000 in sales.
Oh, so, okay, I didn't catch that. So the 1.6 million is replaced by 600,000 in sales?
That is correct. That's the natural breakpoint on the lease. So technically, where we sit, where we sit right now, the $48,000 that you would be looking at, if in fact, we were to... You were to approve this, and our lease structure would be $4,000 a month. If we followed suit with the sales increase that we sit at right now, technically, you would be, at the end of this lease year, you would be in a percentage rent scenario, getting $4,000 to $5,000 on top of that 48. So rent for... This fiscal year would be between $52,000 and $53,000.
Okay. And then, as you track out moving forward, if you were to be able to achieve a better share of the market for some of the non-tournament, non-league business, if you will, is there a future point on your performer where you see the revenue to the city being back up to the level that it is now?
In order to get the revenue at what is in front of you, where the city, we would be back up at $100,000, we would... It would roughly take us a little over $1.2 million in sales to... For the city to realize the rent structure that we were paying.
And to make sure I'm following that, would you be doubling your current sales?
We'd be doubling our current sales. If you look at the numbers that are before you, from our historical lookback in the five years that we've been there, we've shown substantial increases on a year-over-year basis, each and every time. And to kind of go back to a comment that was said earlier, and I agree, this is the... We are asking for a concession for the investment we made to the facility, but it's in our best interest, 100%, to more than reach that number. I would hope that we would reach, we would get the... We would get back to what we had been paying in three and a half, four years, I would hope. I would hope that we could get it to that.
And then, I guess my other question is, so it's an option to renew for every five years. So the assumption would be that this $4,000 per month would be in place for the next five years, plus the 8% of anything above 600,000?
Correct.
And then there'd be another conversation in five years?
Certainly have that right, to exercise that, to go into the next five-year option.
You just have to renew, it's at that rate forever.
That's my question. So right now, the way the contract reads, I think he has the right to exercise an option, so would the option be... So that would be my only concern, is can we... I'm okay with everything in here, except I would like to amend the contract so that at that next five-year point, both parties have the ability to relook at the rate, that it's not just an automatic extension at the rate that we've negotiated, because I do think that that's how it reads now.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yeah.
And is that something that you would be comfortable with?
Yes.
Okay.
Is that it? Ms. Kerrigan?
Well, Julie just took my thunder, that's... I had no problem with the agreement as it stands, except for, in five years, I'd like to do the same thing, and have the option that the city may be able to increase, decrease, whatever we need to do.
Mr. Lawson?
Just, the whole thing just doesn't set well with me, so I'm not going to support it. The bottom line is, I don't think we should be in business with private entities or landlord. The rent is the rent. You lower his rent down below market by half, I don't get it.
Below market, it's above market, isn't it?
It's currently above market, based on whether or not they pay all these extra things, but they don't pay.
Except the proposal, it's at $1.11 a square foot. And we pay the utilities. So in essence, we're taking... We're paying $75,000 for him to be there, is what the proposal in front of me today Because we're taking a $52,000 cut, plus the utilities of $24,000.
We're paying those.
So we're eating $75,000 to let this restaurant be there.
We're paying three of the five utilities right now, and if they were paying it, they should be paying the $8,300 a month, but they're not paying that, and the... I'm really sorry, but my print is so light here. The going rate is based on them paying utilities, and paying for exterior maintenance, and paying for the common area around them at $2 a square foot. They don't pay any of that, so they are paying way more than the going rate now. They... Because they're... All of that's, and I don't know if I'm saying this right, Jack, but they're... Those expenses are not on the tenant, they're on us, and so that $2...
So if he was somewhere else, he would pay that, though.
That's correct.
So in essence, you add that to the number. So it's more money. So when we go down to $4,000 a month, we go to $1.11 a square foot, which is below market, well below market, with the utilities paid. Because if you add that back in, you got to add that $24,000 bucks back in. Actually, you got to add $75,000, because we're taking a $52,000 loss.
Right.
The numbers don't work out for me. I'd like to see it rebid. I understand that you have a great investment there, but I also understand, I haven't seen any advertising out of you either. I haven't seen an advertisement won.
A lot of the ways that... A lot of the things that our business does is we try to partner and work with various community organizations, and the marketing efforts that we get through those are, we're making hand-to-hand, a hand-to-hand relationship. We were the caterer to the mayor's golf tournament a few years ago, free of charge, I might add. And that was a way for us to put our business in front of that, of the participants at that event. I feel that, well, you know, I feel that if it's placing an ad in a newspaper and doing those types of things, we have a presence, we have a presence on the web. We will continue, we've done zip code mailers, we've done Valpak's, we've done in the neighborhood, we've done Z Bests. We'll continue to do those things. They're all done for the purpose of trying to build traffic in our restaurant.
Like I said, I still have a problem, we're supplementing the business, so I'm not going to vote for it, just for that reason. Nowhere else in Washoe County. Can you get the landlord to supplement you $75,000 a year?
Mr. Kerrigan?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to make a motion and see how it goes. I'm here to approve the amendments to the agreement for Golden... I'm here to approve the amendments to the agreement for Golden Eagle Regional Park concession services as presented by staff with the addition of a five-year look into the contract.
Okay.
Do we have a second for discussion?
I'll second for discussion.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilman Kerrigan, seconded by Councilman Schmidt to approve the amendment as written by staff with the amendment by Mr. Kerrigan. Questions? Ms. Ratty.
So first of all, I'd like to strengthen that motion just a little bit more than, just to be a look, because I think what we're now is a, a relationship where they have an automatic option, and so I want to eliminate that automatic option with, to allow for the negotiation of the rate. So I want to just review it. I want to be able to say that at the five-year mark, because right, if I understand this correctly, five years from now, if we approve $4,000, the way the contract is currently written, they have an automatic right for another five years at that rate. Is that correct?
We've written notice as they did this time.
As we did this time. We have, we, we have, we have a pre-existing automatic right, which we've exercised.
But just make sure I understand, your pre-existing automatic right is at $8,333 a month, correct?
Correct, that's correct.
So I'm still saying you have an automatic right to renew, but that there's a negotiation of the rate? That, that's what I'm asking.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
That's fine.
That's what I, that's what I tried.
That's what your motion was?
That's what I meant to say.
Okay, great.
That's fine.
Well, what I really meant to say is what Julia just said.
And then I'd like to explain, I guess, why I'm going to support it. I do believe that we have public-private partnerships all over town, and that this is a public-private partnership, and I do believe in those philosophically. I do, I think it's a ridiculously tough location. I mean, in business, it's location, location, location. And so for six months, it's brilliant, and for the other six months, not so much. And so I do think that if it's important to us to have this kind of a, an amenity there for the clients that we have coming to Golden Eagle Park, and we are treating Golden Eagle Park more and more like an economic development, the economic development gem that it is, this is an amenity that we have to have. So I do believe it's a public-private partnership. I'm perfectly okay with saying that we're willing to offer a rate that's below market rate because we are trying to create an amenity in a facility that has, that creates more room nights than all the rest of the special events combined. So that's why I'm willing to support it.
Mr. Schmidt.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Tracy, we just can't go and rebid this, correct? I mean, he's got an option, he can exercise his option at the thing. We just can't arbitrarily say we're going to rebuild it, rebid it.
Not if he accepts his option.
If he accepts his option the way it is.
You're right.
Yeah, it's, I put that in there because it's certainly a possibility, but their intent, as well as, as mine, is to continue our relationship for the next 10 years. It's working out well, it's improving. We're working together better on signage at the entrance of the park. We are working together better on getting advertising out through our activity guide, which is a value to our community, going out 30, 35,000 strong twice a year. They've improved some signage on the building itself to allow, let people know that it's open, because you don't know until you get to their, you know, their stairs. But the intent is to continue this relationship. I put that option in there, but the timing is bad. I mean, if we, if we don't accept this now, the, the timing is just, it wouldn't be good if we went out to bid to start over.
Let me just throw something out, see if the council and the order would want to take a look at this. I, I do agree with Mr. Lawson that I think July is the wrong time for this contract. I think that that is to right in the middle of the busy season, and if he decides not to exercise this contract, we're done for the, for, you know, we lose a big chunk of money and trying to get somebody else in there. So I think there is some value of moving this to a January contract date. Would it, is there any appetite to look at this at two and a half years? Redo the extension for two and a half years? Allow, you know, I think you're very aware of our concerns and I think staff is...
Yeah.
We're in discussion, that's why I'm just trying to, I'm throwing out ideas. But I mean, I'm, I'm willing to ask for change of the motion on it, but I just think that maybe we could, we could solve a couple of little problems. You're aware of our concern. Two and a half years gets it back to the council pretty quickly, and we can see if there's been results instead of waiting for five years on this thing and, and get it, you know, I think staff is aware that it's a problem now, that we got to get, we got to do something with it. I mean, we can't, we just can't take and give away the discount without some kind of assurances that we're moving forward at a record quickly pace. I think five years might be a little too long.
Ms. Kerrigan.
Yeah, I just wanted to give my two cents worth about the math. If you take, if you just do this plain math, it's going to, we're going to have a restaurant and we're going to make $24,000 a year. That's how I see it. Because if we don't renew this, the possibility of the, of the restaurant not being renewed, they could walk away, and then we're going to have zero restaurant and zero money. And then you can go out the bid. So I have no problem with extending this for five years, because if, if you make it, you make it. If you don't, then guess what? If you don't make it in three years, we'll have to rebid it anyway. And so I think that problem we've solved. I have no problem with helping you out on this. I don't want to bring up a couple of things that we've done in the city council to help other businesses in the city. So we're, we are a nonprofit, but for as far as I'm concerned, it looks like we're going to have a viable business and still make $24,000 and take care of the residents and the visitors out there with some good food. So I have no problem with this.
I agree with the extension, too. I, I think it's something we should do. This, this is a tough, tough deal here. Restaurants are tough anyway, and this one took on maybe more than you could, bigger bite than you should have probably. At the beginning, it looked very, very good to us, I'm sure. Probably looked good to you at the time. I know you've done a lot of stuff out there to get people in there, done some special things and those kind of things, but tough, tough deal here. I would hate to see this thing not be there at all. We, we need some kind of a restaurant out there. I think that's been proven. It hasn't been as great as you want, probably not as great as we want. We would love to see it better. But we have an opportunity, I think, here with the restructure of going to $600,000 and 8% over $600,000. I think we have a, a good way of making up that lost revenue that we're talking about and also giving you a little bit of break at the same time. After all, it is a partnership, is it not? It's not an ideal one, probably could have been better going in, you know, everybody shoots a little bit high, maybe we shot a little bit too high, maybe you shot a little bit too high. But again, I think it's a partnership and it's, it's a moral obligation on our part to help you guys out, too. So that's my two cents. Any, any other discussion? We do have a motion on the floor.
Okay, everyone understand the motion? Okay, any other questions? Seeing none, please vote. Passes four to one. Okay, so you have your extension, you have your reduced rate, is that what I'm saying? And then you'll come back in five years and we will re-talk about this again.
Yes.
Okay?
Thank you.
Good luck and I hope we can all make this a better thing for everybody. Thanks, thanks for sticking in with us, I appreciate it. 6.2, consideration and possible approval of an agreement between West Care Nevada, Inc. and the City of Sparks relating to the provision of funds for the Community Triage Center. Go ahead, George.
Good afternoon, Mayor, City Council. Thank you. George Graham for the record, Housing Specialist City of Sparks. And what I'd like to bring before you for your consideration is the agreement with West Care Nevada and the City of Sparks for the operations of the Triage Center, which is at the campus of the Community Assistance Center. And the funding will be a total of $87,000. We've had a contract with West Care last year, and we funded approximately at the same level. And with all the funding, there'll be a contribution of the four hospitals from, so the Northern Nevada, which is Northern Nevada Medical Center, Reno Medical, Renown Medical Center, Renown South Meadows, and Prime Healthcare. And the county also is contributing to have a grant with West Care. And, and all the jurisdictions, either cash or in-kind, is contributing, as well as the hospitals, to match the $500,000 portion from the state. And the total cash contribution will be a total of $700, $7,000 between the hospitals and the jurisdictions to match, to meet that match. And the, to provide the, West Care to provide the services to serve the inbred and the homeless and really the population that doesn't have the resources for the type of care that's needed. And they've performed very, very well over the past year, and we've, we, we, the Community of Sparks have reaped benefits as far as people being served here, as well as other, in other jurisdictions. And that concludes really what I'd like to present, and I'm prepared to answer any questions at this time.
Questions? Mr. Kerrigan.
George, did Rena or pay?
Well, they have cash. No, no, there's a in-kind commitment from City of Reno.
Yeah, but I think, wasn't it this year that they didn't, didn't pay for it? Am I not mistaken?
It's not new cash contribution from Reno.
In-kind.
For this, it's in-kind.
Oh, okay.
To the level of $160,000 in-kind.
That's true.
But City of Sparks, I believe that there was some negotiation or still, as far as them contributing some cash, but I'm not aware of if any determination was made from that. But there was some continued negotiations and discussions, but I'm not aware of cash from City Reno. In-kind, yes.
Okay, questions? Mr. Smith?
You know, I think Mike's right. I think last year, we decided to give, to show them that we would do it, because they didn't want to give any money last year. So I think they backed out last year.
Correct.
Okay.
Yes, you're correct. And this year, they did in-kind last year.
Last year?
Last year, yes, they did do in-kind last year, as they do intend this year.
Okay.
But again, I don't know what the discussions with City of Reno on their commitment of cash, I don't know where that's at now.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else, questions? Julia, Ratty.
I've just been incredibly proud of the City of Sparks for doing what I think is pound-wise and, come on, get that wrong. Smart. Thank you. It's a rare instance where we are investing in prevention so that we can save some dollars on the backend, and I know the data is hard to come by, but, you know, we, we know if we can keep people out of jails, if we can keep people out of much more higher-cost facilities and meet them at the preventive level, that it's a better outcome for the patient and it's a better outcome for the local governments that are paying for it. So I'd like to see us move forward. I would like to make a motion to approve the funding agreement between the City of Sparks and West Care Nevada for operation of the Community Triage Center.
Do we have a second for discussion? Ms. Kerrigan.
Second.
Moved by Councilwoman Ratty, seconded by Councilman Kerrigan. Discussion, Mr. Lawson?
Yeah, is there a reason this coming out of the general fund, why we don't have a specific fund for this?
As far as with the CDBG and all that. CDBG funding, it's, there's a requirement of matching fund, and that's where the, our matching portion came, and just as we did last year. It's the same level.
It has to come out of the general fund?
Yeah, we budgeted it though.
Yeah. And that was budgeted, so, okay.
And it's at the same level as what we did last year for that particular item, yes.
I think this is good for prevention, like Julia said, or tried to say, I think was what she was talking about. I, I think it saves overall through the whole community, I think it saves a lot of money having people not go to emergency that never gets paid, and then our rates go up, and we pay more for emergency, and on and on and on. So this is, this is good stuff.
Any other questions? Okay, seeing none, please vote. Passed unanimously. Thanks, George.
Thank you.
6.3, consideration and possible approval of an interlocal cooperative agreement between the City of Reno, Washoe County, and City of Sparks for the operation of the Community Assistance Center. Are you doing this, too, George?
Yes.
Okay, good. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Again, George Graham. Good afternoon, everyone. Same, same place. What I have before your consideration is the Community Assistance Center, whereas the interlocal cooperative agreement with all the jurisdictions, City of Reno, as well as Washoe County, and the funding level we're asking is the $100,000, $168,000. And that's approximately the same level as last year. The level, the amount of the general fund contributing to this is less than what we had last year. Last year, we hit the, the general fund was at $18,000, whereas now it's just the $5,000. And we increased the portion that CDBG was contributing on that. And, and the breakdown, we have contributing other, all the jurisdictions contributing for the total cash of the, all governments is approximately 1.9 plus for the operations of the Community Assistance Center. And there's different stipulations of what different funds can be used for, but it's a cooperative agreement again with all jurisdictions. I'm prepared to answer any questions.
Questions for George. Okay, Ms. Ratty.
So same thing. I think it's a good use of our funds. I mean, some of us know, remember the, the good old days when there was a Human Services Advisory Board that distributed a significant pot of money from all kinds of different funding sources to meet the human services needs of our community. And we've really drilled it down to a focus on making sure that we're meeting the needs of the homeless population. There's no question in my mind, I see it every day, that we have a homeless challenge in the City of Sparks, and that we need to make sure that there are services available to meet the needs of folks who are struggling. So I will make the motion to approve the interlocal cooperative agreement between the City of Reno, Washoe County, and the City of Sparks for operation of the Community Assistance Center.
Mr. Smith.
Second.
Have a motion by Ms. Ratty, seconded by Mr. Smith. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passed unanimously. Again, thanks, George. Good use, I think, of our funds. $100,000 to pay to help the homeless center is nothing, really. It's not, not a lot. I wish we could do more. The homeless center does a terrific job over there. I've been over there several times. We just had a Sparks-sponsored birthday party over there for the kids at the homeless center. It was really a great event, and a lot of kids showed up, and it was really worthwhile to see the smiles on their faces on something they would never get to do if it wouldn't have been for, you know, us putting forth something like this. So $100,000 is really not a lot to do what we do over there, so thanks for approving that, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, let's move on to 6.4, consideration and possible approval of 2014 Street Rehabilitation Unit 3, bid number 1314-025, PWP-WA2014-197, to Q&amp;D Construction, in the amount of $339,200. Mr. Speedhump.
Thank you, Mayor. Assistant members, John Erickson, for the record. As the mayor indicated, this is a, a project of the 2014 Street Rehabilitation Unit 3 project. This project was included in the fiscal year 2014 capital improvement list. Where this project is located is on the east end of Richard's Way, and then is bound to the east by Pro Basco, so we would be rehabilitating Arndell and Kimway. The scope of this work will be to remove and replace the existing paving in the curb and gutter, as well as installing a new sidewalk on both sides of the street, and then making a storm drain improvement in and around this location on Arndell. The engineer's estimate for the project was $360,000. We received four qualified bids. Q&amp;D came in with a low bid of just a little bit over $339,000. We have 40 working days scheduled for the project, and if it is approved today, we should be completed by the first week in September. That concludes my presentation. I can answer any questions.
Questions for Mr. Erickson. Okay, I'm not looking for a motion. Mr. Smith?
I'm moving to a word of 2014 Street Rehab Unit 3 Project to Q&amp;D Construction, in the amount of $339,200 bucks. the amount of 339,200 bucks.
Do you have a second? Mr. Schmidt?
Second.
Moved by Councilman Smith, seconded by Councilman Schmidt, to approve six point four Street Rehabilitation Program, Rehabilitation Program. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passed unanimously. Okay, six point five, consideration possible approval of the mayor's recommendation for appointment to the Sparks Rec, Parks and Recreation Commission and the Sparks Civil Service Commission. Mr. Driscoll?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of the council, Steve Driscoll, your city manager, for the record. Um, on behalf of the mayor, we have two actions in this particular item. Um, one is for, um, positions on the Sparks Parks and Recreation Commission, and the second action that we'll ask you to take is on the Civil Service Commission. So with the Sparks Parks and Recreation Commission first, the mayor is, is recommending that we reappoint Pam Bear, reappoint Mr. David Sexton, and have a new appointment with Gina Odegaard for, um, three-year terms on the commission.
Okay, questions on Parks and Rec? We can probably do these together, Steve.
Probably can. Um, and on Sparks?
Does he have a question, Ed?
No.
Okay. Let's wait and do them both at the same time. Go ahead.
So for Civil Service Commission as well, the mayor is recommending the, there are two vacancies, both for three-year terms, and one is a reappointment of Michael Rainey, and the second is a reappointment of Louis Robert Dennis to that commission.
Questions? Okay, looking for a motion? Mr. Lawson?
I move to confirm the appointment of the mayor to the City of Sparks Park and Recreation Commission and the Civil Service Commission.
Ms. Ratty?
Second.
Moved by Councilwoman Lawson, seconded by Councilwoman Ratty, to approve the recommendations for Parks and Rec and, uh, Civil Service Commission. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passed unanimously. Okay, six point six, presentation, discussion, possible approval of an interlocal cooperative agreement establishing the regional business license and permits programs, City of Sparks, the City of Reno, Washoe County, and Washoe County Health District. Go ahead, Steve.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of the council, Steve Driscoll, city manager, for the record. Um, this is an action that has, um, been long-waited for by this council and, um, the other elected officials of the valley. Several years ago, we took upon, um, ourselves, after direction from the council, to look at regional services and, and to specifically take a hard look at business licensing and also, um, building permitting. And this is a result of, of that project, which has been going on for a couple of years. Um, you provided direction to your staff all over a year ago to, um, try to bring in a software platform that would modernize and regionalize, um, those two particular programs. And as a result of that, your staff put together with the help, so we're talking about Washoe County, Washoe County Health Department, City of Reno, City of Sparks, and took a hard look at permitting and licensing. We did a request for proposal under the leadership of Washoe County, and we worked as a team on that. We had several demonstrations and settled on the Acela product. Acela is a product that we're all familiar with. Uh, Reno currently does all of their, um, land use and building permit work using the Acela, uh, product. Both Washoe County and Sparks have used Permits Plus in the past, which is now a dinosaur, but we've been looking along with those, and so this is the same company. And so with that, we went through a very extensive, um, request for proposal. We developed a comprehensive scope of work to reconcile back to that request, and as a result, we now are prepared to initiate a contract, um, with your approval with Acela. And the way, the reason we have an interlocal agreement in front of you is that we will have a single relationship for the region with Acela. Washoe County has agreed to act as the, um, kind of the project lead and fiscal agent for that. We will, um, use our project team to work with theirs to accomplish the goals and objectives. This project is expected to take 12 to 16 months from the time we execute the contract to be up and running in full, and will give us a lot of, um, opportunity to do things online, to do things with, uh, the customers from their point of view rather than ours. And, um, very importantly, wherever possible, the four jurisdictions will do business the same way, have the business processes be the same. It does allow us to have our own individual governance where it's needed and where it's mandated, but when those are not the mandates, we'll try our best to have things be as close to possible as we can. Um, so what this agreement, which before you does, is it provides, um, with an investment of 448,542.52 total for the city, broken down between the Business Enterprise Fund and the General Fund, um, the initial investment to bring in all the product that we need and have all the access, both from a mobile and as well as a static basis. And then also, with an additional 37,030.87 a year for the first couple of years, it allows us to have all of the users we've identified to access the system using whatever methodology they need, whether it's at their desk or on their iPhone or iPad in the field. Um, this allows all the users there. It also provides for 5.5% funding for contingency, for, you know, any unseen things on the project. It provides that your manager and his work team controls the efforts of the project from a regional basis, and so that any modification of the system has to be approved by myself on your behalf before it can just be implemented. Doesn't allow any one agency to run off and do something specific unless they're going to pay for it by themselves. And at the end of the day, um, one of the most important parts of this is that it will be hosted by Acela, so we'll be using their onshore equipment. It will stay onshore. Um, we'll use their equipment, their expertise, they'll keep it current. Um, the prices that we have contemplate that for the first five years, and so it'll free up our, um, technical staff to not only support this, but support other things, and we'll stay current, won't be having to worry about tech refresh, because they will do it automatically. And they will be responsible for contingency and redundancies, so if they lose a data center, they'll be the ones responsible for switching it to a second data center so they have full, um, contingency, so we do not lose operations. So with that, um, I'll open it up for any questions that the council might have.
Questions, Ms. Ratty?
I do have a question. Um, so, just curious how flexible the system is, given the process that we're going through recently with medical marijuana with three, at least three jurisdictions. I'm not sure about the health district on that one, but at least three jurisdictions coming up with very different sets of rules and pricing and regulations for how you get that kind of a business license. So is that, would that kind of a specialty thing be have, just have to be handled offline? Or can it be built to handle that level of deviation?
The contemplation that the four teams have today is that wherever possible, we make things the same, and wherever necessary, they need to be different, they'll be different. So, for instance, business licenses, we'll each have our own fee schedule, and the system will basically be four side-by-side systems.
Mm-hmm.
We'll have ours. Wherever possible, they'll look the same, especially to the customer. Where they need to be different, then they'll be different. So part of the, the team goal, as we go through it, we'll be looking at things like fee schedules and understanding where they're different and why, and if they need to stay different, they'll stay different. And if they can be changed, then we'll go through whatever the chain mechanism. So in some instances, if we decide we want to change our fees to be more like Reno and Washoe County, we may need to come back to you and adjust our current ordinance to do that, but we would have to justify it. In the meantime, we maintain the governance of those fees per your direction.
Great. Um, I just want to comment that what a long, strange trip it's been, you know, going back to thanking our members on the Shared Services Committee for, you know, pushing this kind of an idea that was quite some time ago, thanking staff from all the jurisdictions for really seeing it through, and then particularly thanking the City of Sparks staff, because I know when the bill came due, it was a deep, it was a, a pretty big lift for us to be able to figure out how to participate, um, but we got it done. And I think it's a very important thing that we're doing for the community, so thank you.
Mr. Schmidt?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Julia, for that. And then, you know, I, I think for, I think for the mayor and I, as I said, for, I don't know how many years on the Shared Services, this is the number-one item that came out of that for several years, and probably just about the only item that came out that truly is productive for, you know, the, the entire community. So I, I thank staff for diligently working on, uh, pursuing this and making it happen. Thank you to everybody involved.
Chair of Public Count, Mr. Abney, Trey Abney from the chamber. Come on down, Trey.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of council. For the record, Trey Abney with the chamber. We strongly support this process, and we want to thank, uh, Mr. Driscoll and your staff and the staff of the other jurisdictions for working, uh, so diligently on this. Obviously, this is, this is the next step in what ultimately will hopefully be a regional business license, uh, type system. We've now gone to where you can go to each of the three jurisdictions and get licenses for any of the three. Uh, this will be able to have renewals and other things online. There's no reason in this day and age where somebody should have to drive down and physically go to a counter and take care and shuffle people around, and we can do all this online in a much, um, easier process. Uh, this is an economic development tool as well. This will help businesses that are looking here, looking to move here and expand here. Um, you know, it's one more tool in our toolbox, if you will, to do that. So we, uh, we strongly support this and urge your support. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Trey. Appreciate it. Okay, any other questions? Go ahead, Steve.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, kind of two things. Um, one, I kind of skipped over the, the secondary piece. Um, also, we've talked about a, a tech fee to help kind of pay for this. We've not really discussed exactly what that would mean and go. We do know, um, kind of what we believe would be a reasonable fee, when the system's up and running, that we could charge as an add-on to our current fee structure and go. Um, staff is suggesting that we take a little harder look at the details, and then with your permission, we'll bring it back to you, um, and suggest whether we want, um, to, to broach that and exactly how, and whether the amounts are there. So as part of the motion, we are asking that you approve the item, but also, um, keep in the, in our forefront that we'll come back and talk about a tech fee. The second thing I'd be remiss, we have some guests in the audience from Washoe County and the City of Reno and Washoe County Health Department. Um, they're here because they believe strongly in what we're doing as, as a region, and it's their team support that's helped us bring this back to you. So I just would like to recognize the folks that are here from that standpoint, because we would not have got done without them. It is the true sense of shared services and regionalization that we've been talking about. So with that, I'll be quiet.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, looking for a motion? Julia?
I move the council will approve the City of Sparks participation in an interlocal cooperative agreement establishing the regional, regional business license and permits program, the City of Sparks, the City of Reno, Washoe County, and the Washoe Health District, in an amount not to exceed 448,542.52 for the initial system investment, including a 5.5% funding for project changes, authorize the initial annual operating licensing fee of 37,030.87, and direct staff to return prior to the go-live date with a regional technology fee to recover portions of the project costs as presented by staff.
Mr. Schmidt?
Second.
Moved by Councilwoman Ratty, seconded by Councilman Schmidt, to approve agenda item six point five. Any further discussion? Mr. Lawson? Nothing? Okay. Okay, seeing none, please vote. Passed unanimously. Thanks, Steve.
Thank you.
Next is six point seven, consideration and possible approval of 440,000 dollars for contract labors for the Parks and Street Maintenance Special Events Support Park Rental Cleanup during fiscal year 1415.
Good afternoon, Mayor, City Council. Dan Hamlin, Maintenance Operations Manager, Public Works.
Good afternoon, Mayor, City Council. Casey Vaughn, crews, Hartz IV Crew Supervisor for Public Works.
We're here today in consideration and possible approval for 440,000 dollars for contracted labors to work in the parks, the street division, special events, and rentals.
Uh, currently, we're using our contracted labors in parks, uh, they, uh, run our garbage trucks for us. Uh, they also are, uh, running our lawn mowing, with the exception of one full-time employee. And, uh, for, uh, for the streets, they're helping on the patching and the crack sealing during the winter, patching during the summer, and concrete work. For the special events and for the recreation side of it, right now, any, um, we try to use them as much as we can during the days, during regular time, to, uh, take care of our park rentals. They go and clean for our park rentals before they happen, and we use them for any special events that happen during regular time. That is stuff we have to do during regular time. And with that, if you have any questions, we'll be happy to answer them for you.
Questions? Mr. Schmidt?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Is this in our budget already?
Yes, it is.
Yes.
So we have to come back for approval of something we've already put in the budget to do?
Well, without, since it was 440,000, we just bring it back to you.
It's not an additional, but anything that's, that's, has been appropriations already done for?
No.
I'm confused. How, how come we gotta take and go back over something like this when we've already put it in the budget once?
My understanding, anything over 50,000 has to be pre-approved?
But we do, we do a budget. 50 million dollar budget, got all the stuff in it. We don't, we don't go back and prove any other expenditures once the budget's approved. Contracts, yes, but this is...
Mrs. Cruz?
Uh, Neil Cruz, Deputy City Manager for Community Services, for the record. Uh, Councilmember Schmidt, uh, this is in fact a professional services contract, uh, with Manpower, uh, to provide us that resource, and that's why we will bring it back to you on an annual basis. So similar to what we did a year ago when you first allowed us this budget authority. So that's our, our logic to put it in front of you today.
Thank you. Actually, any other questions? Mr. Smith?
Just one, the 40,000 dollars to support special events, you get reimbursed for that through the vendors, don't you?
Yes, we do.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, looking for a motion? Ms. Ratty?
To the, to approve the use of contract labors in the amount of 440,000 during fiscal year 1415.
Mr. Smith?
Second.
Moved by Councilwoman Ratty, seconded by Councilman Schmidt, to approve agenda item six point six. Any further discussion? Mr. Schmidt?
No. That was the second.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Ron? Schmidt? Passed unanimously. Thank you, Mayor. City Council. Thanks, guys. Appreciate it. I don't know if I can get back on track here, but we get to go. Okay, six point eight is the first reading.
Bill number 2677, in Norman, submitting chapter three of the Sparks Municipal Code to align the code with changes made by the RSCVA and with changes made in the Nevada revised statutes, and providing other matters properly related thereto.
This is the first reading for bill number 2677. The public hearing and second reading of this bill will be conducted at the regular city council meeting on Monday, July 14th, 2014. Okay, let's move on to public hearing items. Uh, 7.1, public hearing, second reading, discussion and possible action on bill number 2674. Are these all related, John?
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor, they are, are loosely related, items 7.1 and 7.2, uh, in as much as they are ordinances, and they need individual motions. I have prepared, uh, background that'll cover both, but we'll take them individually, if that's all right.
Yeah, that's all right. Okay, that's what I was, that's what I was getting at. Mr. Smith?
I just wanted to say on these next two items, I want to congratulate Councilman Lawson on spearheading this, and this is one of the biggest things we've done in a long time, so good job, Ed.
Thanks to John.
That's going to be the message.
It's, that's neither here nor there. All of that'll wrap up my presentation.
Don't push your luck.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. John Martini, uh, city engineer, uh, for the record. Um, as the council will recall, about six months ago, um, the Builders Association in Northern Nevada asked us to take a look at deferral of certain building permit fees. Um, they actually asked all the entities, including, uh, Truck Commandos Water Authority and NV Energy. On, uh, December 9th, uh, Councilman Lawson formally requested to staff to do the analysis and research. I was back in front of you on March 10th, and at that time identified that the only action needed by this council would be the ordinances that are in front of you today. Uh, our ordinances for residential construction taxes, as well as a collection of sewer fees, are done by ordinance and need to be changed by ordinance. So with item 7.1, uh, staff is proposing, uh, an amendment, uh, that will allow for fees to be paid at time of issuance or... will, I wrote into this ordinance that they can be deferred until time of C of O or 12 months, whichever comes first. As well, the ordinance also includes restrictive language that will not allow the building official to issue a certificate of occupancy prior to the collection of these fees. With that, that covers 7.1. I'm available with any questions.
Questions for John. Mr. Lawson?
I just want to point out that John's putting the timeframe on there, the 12-month timeframe, was extremely popular with the other entities also, as a way to keep this a closed-in situation. So we kind of expect to see this from Reno and Washoe County to have a time limit on it also.
Mr. Schmidt?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. John, I just want to make sure that Builders Association, everybody's okay with the 12-month? There hasn't been any kind of one to appeal? I don't see anybody here, but it looks like they're going to appeal it, so everybody's okay with it?
To my knowledge, Councilman Schmidt, we had a follow-up meeting about two weeks ago. We announced to the group that, I explained the concerns this council voiced to me, and that is our way to close that loop, if you would, give the building official the right to demand, if you will, after time. And I think, as Councilman Lawson said, it was well-received. I've had no phone calls or comments.
I think it's an important provision, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for all the work on it.
Still, a little clarification. Washoe County had a little bit of an issue on certain types of development. That could take a little longer, and they're going to address that in their ordinance. But for us, I'm almost sure all our stuff is done within a year.
Anyone else? Okay, this is a public hearing. I'll open it to the public. Anyone want to speak? Seeing none, we'll close it to public hearing and bring it back to council for action. Questions? Motion? Mr. Lawson?
Move to approve Bill Number 2674, an ordinance amending Chapter 13 of the Sparks Municipal Code to allow the collection of sewer connection fees be deferred from the building permit issuance to prior to issuance of the certificate of occupancy and providing for other matters properly related thereto.
Second, Mr. Smith?
Second.
Moved by Councilman Lawson, seconded by Councilman Smith to approve 7.1, Bill Number 2674. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passed unanimously. 7.2 is public hearing, second reading, discussion, and possible action on Bill Number 2675. Go ahead, John.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The background on this item, as I said previously, is the same. The actual proposed changes to Title 15 are twofold. In Section 15, 12.040, it's a portion of our code in which we, if you will, levy the residential construction tax. I simply cleaned up the language in that portion of the code and took out any reference to the time of payment, and then added a new section, 15.12.041, that speaks specifically to the time of payment. And in that, similar to the language in sewer connection fees, the residential construction tax can be paid at time of building issuance or deferred until time of certificate of occupancy or 12 months, whichever comes first. And again, language is added to this ordinance restricting the building official from issuing a temporary certificate of occupancy until all fees are paid. And that concludes this item. I'm available for any questions.
Questions? Mr. Schmidt? No? No questions? Okay, this is a public hearing, so I'll open it to the public. Anyone want to speak? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing, bring it back to council for action. Mr. Lawson?
I'd like to make a motion. I move to approve Bill Number 2675, an ordinance amending Chapter 15 of the Sparks Municipal Code to allow the collection of residential construction tax to be deferred from building permit issuance to prior to issuance of the certificate of occupancy and providing for other matters properly related thereto.
Mr. Smith?
Second.
Moved by Councilman Lawson, seconded by Councilman Smith to approve 7.2, Bill Number 2675. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passed unanimously. 7.3 is a public hearing, second reading, discussion, and possible action on Bill Number 2676, an ordinance amending Title 9, Section 9.34.083, and Title, Section 5.08.020 of the Sparks Municipal Code to provide a vendor permitting process for vendors participating in special events in Sparks. Ms. Dominguez?
Good afternoon, Mayor Martini and councilmembers. Tracy Dominguez, Parks and Recreation Director. Before you is a recommendation for a change in ordinance to allow a vendor permitting process to be established. Currently, the ordinance states that you have to have a business license in the City of Sparks in order to do any kind of business, so that can be very difficult for vendors of special events that are not from this area, let alone this state. The permit would be valid for the dates and times and duration of that event. So it is a real easy, user-friendly process that we're proposing, and the promoter would be coming to us to purchase the number of permits that they need, and then it is up to them to collect those fees from their individual vendors. And if they bring back any forms unused, we will give them the money back for those permits not used.
Questions? Mr. Smith?
I can't find it. I was looking at it earlier, but does it say just on Sparks' property for special events?
It would be public property, correct.
Okay, so if somebody came to a building like the conventions, well, that's not in Sparks, but into a private building and put on a special event?
The Nugget.
That goes through licensing. This is just vendor permits on public property. We do events on public property through Parks and Recreation.
So how come we don't do it like at the Nugget? Because the other cities do that. If you, if you're doing, you need a one-day permit or a three-day permit, whatever the special event is for. I was just confused on why we're restricting it to that.
It's a matter of, she didn't make it, enforcement, and we don't have, my understanding is that goes through the business licensing side versus...
So you're saying they're buying a business license for three days? Or you don't know?
That's what, they would have to do that now. I just don't know that it's fully enforced. They'd have to buy a business license now.
If you have a, an event inside the Nugget, you have to buy a business license?
Inside the Nugget? I'm unaware. Parks and Recreation does not get involved in private property aspect of events.
You're just doing public property.
We're just doing public property. I'm unclear on that. Francine should be here any minute. She might be able to answer that question. I'm sorry. Yeah, sorry.
Okay, I just, I just not going to...
If you do that in Reno, you have to have one.
Well, you do, yeah, you, like, if they do an event at the car museum, automobile museum, they have to pay $15 for a special event fee. And the, it's enforced, they come by and check to make sure you've paid that fee. Or they, actually, they make sure that whoever the vendor, the promoter of that event is, make sure that they pay for everybody, so they charge it.
Yeah, currently, the special event application process only applies to public property. If the Nugget wants to do something on their property, it does not go through us.
Well, isn't that another loss of revenue if we, if we don't get that? I know, my, and the only reason I know this is because my wife goes all over, 27 different cities, and in every city, you have to pay a special event license. They have business license that she can buy for the whole year, for instance, California, because she does many events in California. But if she does one in Utah or Arizona, wherever, she has to have a special events license. And you buy it on the way into town if you don't buy it online beforehand.
It is, it is a lost revenue stream. By implementing this on public property, we're anticipating an additional $18,000 just for what's on public property.
Okay, I...
I don't know. I'm sorry, Ron. I don't have your...
I'd like to look at that, too. I'll maybe, I'll do that in a minute. Thank you.
Yeah, those gun shows are tough, huh?
Yeah. Any other questions?
Keep your head down. Okay, this is a public hearing, so open it to the public. Anyone want to speak on this particular item? Okay, seeing none, we'll bring it back to the council for action. Questions? Mr. Smith?
I'll make the motion. I move to approve a dot bill Number 2676, amending Title 9, Section 9.34.083, and Title 5, Section 5.08.020 of the Sparks Municipal Code.
Now, a second? Mr. Schmidt?
Second.
Moved by Councilman Smith, seconded by Councilman Schmidt to approve 7.3, Bill Number 2676. Any further discussion?
One quick question.
Go ahead, Mr. Lawson.
Who's counting the vendors? Do we, are we gonna, Parks and Rec gonna do that, or is code enforcement?
We will be doing the enforcement.
So you guys, someone from Parks and Rec?
Parks and Rec, the producer will be responsible for coming to us with a list of the vendors that they intend to have in their event, and they are going to pay upfront for those, and we'll give them the number of forms that they've requested. Then they get it completed by the vendor. The vendor is supposed to post one of the, it's a triplicate copy, so one copy has to go in their booth. We will do a walkthrough and make sure everyone has one posted in their booth, and if they are not on the list, we will charge for that permit at, when we charge for these service costs. We'll add it to the itemized bill if it's, we find that there's one out there that hasn't been paid for.
Okay. Okay, any other further questions? We'll have a question for you here in a minute, Francine, but let's vote on this first. Seeing no further questions, all in favor, or, I mean, please vote. Passed unanimously. Okay, Mr. Smith has a question for you.
We just passed the, well, not an ordinance, but we pass it so we can charge for special event licenses on public property.
For people doing business during special events, yes.
Special events. Is there such a thing that we have in the city if they're on, like, if they're doing at the Nugget or another building, where they're doing a special event?
Not at this time.
Okay.
So it's something we can look at then. Okay. Thanks, Francine.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Grace.
Thank you.
Okay, we don't need a closed-door session, Steve?
No, sir.
Comments from the public? Anyone in the public want to make a comment? Comment from the council or a city manager? Mr. Driscoll?
Thank you. I'll, I'll take that as direction on the private property for the, that, so I'll take that from direction of the council to look at.
Okay.
So thank you. And I have two other things. One, we will be not conducting a meeting of the council on July 28. We don't have any business that's specific to that date, and our clerk's office has an opportunity to do some statewide training here at the University of Nevada, so we're going to send our clerk's office off to do that during that week, so we won't have anything there. So we'll be pushing items between the 14th meeting, the first meeting of July, and then off to the first meeting in August. The second thing is I'll be sending you a copy of a memo from the City of Reno related to smarter regions. They're putting together a visioning focus groups, and they're asking for participation by elected officials from the local jurisdictions. There are some future dates in July. There was one today, but there was miscommunication as to exactly what these dates and times meant. We've now got it clarified. And so there'll be several dates, and then each date has specific time. So to the extent that any one or all of you want to participate, they'll be working with the dates and with attendance. They'll do the best they can to not establish a quorum, because they're going to be working outside of a full, large working group at this point. So I will forward that memo to you. If you have any questions, I'll chase them down. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Lawson?
Yeah, I just wanted to publicly thank our fire department for being professional and very workmanlike in their jobs. I think it deserves being mentioned that we do not have any of the issues that we see across the valley. So thank you very much, and thank you to all your people that do such a wonderful job.
Anyone else? Okay, I'd like to request staff bring back to the city council where discussion and possible direction, a remaster plan and rezone the area generally east of Probasco, north of Prater, and west of I Street within the TOD to a commercial designation. This will be just for discussion to see if the council wants to go ahead with it. And I will give you this, Steve. Okay, anyone else? Okay, seeing no further business, we're adjourned.
Okay, I'll call the Sparks Redevelopment Agency meeting for June 23, 2014. With a roll call, please.
Chairman Smith?
Here.
Agency members, Ratty, Lawson?
Here.
Martini?
Here.
Kerrigan?
Here.
Schmidt?
Here.
City Attorney Thornley?
Here.
And agency managers, Driscoll?
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll open it up to the public. Anybody in the public wishing to speak at this time? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the agency. Approval of the agenda. Anyone who want to pull anything, change it?[1700.23]